And to the Republic, to all who stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we ready to go?
We are.
Can I make a motion to send the warrants?
I will second that.
All in favor? Do you want to have the warrants in front of you?
Ms. Law Carroll is starting the circle of signatures. I have a motion approved in minutes of August 19, 2020, so the board meeting as written.
I will second that.
All in favor? Okay, excellent. So, old bids, open bids for tax applied property. Can we go to the, was that just us?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and here, here you're on.
Right, well, you've got everything in front of you. I don't know if you have any questions. Issue will be out before Thanksgiving, 39th annual edition. Three pages from Lubeck. Your ad renewal will be $236. And I believe last year I brought you 50 copies of the issue. We'll be printing 7,000. Your ad would be in the section from Lubeck, if you approve it. That's my story.
So, it says 35, do we get 50?
I'll bring you 50. I think I did last year.
Okay. Make a motion, we accept the ad.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Thank you. Renee, I'll talk to you next week. I'll be coming back to property services.
You got it.
Thank you so much.
So, you'll have to, we can't get the checkup for the next meeting. The warrants are only signed every two weeks. So, you get payment, whatever two weeks from today is.
Oh, payment?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I'll send you a bill this fall.
Oh, okay.
I got enough money to eat till, I think, the end of the month.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
You're very welcome. Thank you for doing that for the Corey's. It's wonderful. I like the article. Marilyn, we're going to skip to you, so you can get, because I'm sure you're busy and you work too hard as it is. We never get ahold of you. So, Marilyn, I asked Marilyn to come in and explain to us the, what the medical center's been doing for the testing, because Rachel had brought that point out, and we have this letter we're sending to the governor, which I shared with Marilyn. And she doesn't have an opposition to that. But it just, all this stuff she told me, like, 20 minutes of amazing things, and I thought you'd be interested. So, you're on.
Thank you for the opportunity, Marilyn, and you as a board, Madam Chairman, and members of board, I appreciate this opportunity to come and talk to you and share a little bit about what we've been going through since this pandemic began. Really, it began in December, when we began to hear trickles of the pandemic coming. So, we dusted off the pandemic plan that the medical center has developed back in 2009, when Scott Simpson, PA, was here. He really was the mastermind behind that.
Yeah, you don't, you're socially distanced, you're on.
So, he, um...
No, it's your hyperventilating.
Yeah, a little bit of that is nerves. Anyway, Scott helped develop the plan in 2009. I think it was eight, one, in one then. So, we developed the plan. And so, back in December, when we began hearing trickles that there was going to be a worldwide pandemic, we dusted that off. We had actually dusted it off in 2015, too, in response to a pandemic that was talked about but never really came to fruition. So, we, so, we just, in December, January, February, we were just meeting regularly to discuss things. And then, when the governor had the, declared the state of emergency, which I understand she extended today until October 1st, we started, we immediately said, well, we need to be able to test, have tests available. So, we worked with Northern Lights, which is our lab that we use for any lab service other than a few KLEO wave or tests that can be done in-house simply and don't need a lot of oversight. So, we ordered some tests from Northern Lights, and they gave us 25 to start because of the population size and what they had available. And that 25 was for our two offices, one here in Lubeck and then our office in East Mati's. So, we felt pretty good that we at least could test. And then, we also became aware that any further testing that we needed, we needed to go through the local Washington County Emergency Management Agency. So, we ordered some through them and were able to get an additional 200 tests. So, the initial 25 tests that we got, we could send to Northern Lights, and they would process most of them. At that time, they would do most of them, but there were a few that, because they didn't meet the criteria, had to go on to the state lab, which is called, we call it HEAL for short. It's the health, environmental, health and environmental, uh, testing laboratories.
One of those lab facilities.
Yeah, one of those, so, so, we began to do a few tests. And then, things got, so then, we, at that point, we could only test according to certain levels that they had designated. And at that point, and back in March and April, it was only those who were hospitalized, healthcare workers first responded, if you were living in a congregate, living situation such as a nursing home or a jail or someplace like that. And then, the next tier was patients over 60 or anyone that had an underlying medical condition. So, you kind of went down through the list, but you also had to have symptoms related to that. So, then, back on May 18th, there was an increase in the testing capacity. The state got another laboratory machine. And so, they said, well, we have increased testing. So, at that point, the guidelines changed again. So, then, it became head over test. Any person who had one or more symptoms consisted with COVID, they would test somebody who didn't have any symptoms, but who had been in close contact with somebody who was known to be positive to COVID. And close contact meant 30 minutes or longer of less than six feet distance. Then, we could send a test in on those people. And then, anybody who didn't have symptoms but was related to a congregate situation or a known outbreak that had had some association...
Like in the same household or something?
Same household, went to the same party where a number of people had gotten positive and that kind of thing. So, then, in June, there's still testing capability throughout the state, still wasn't where we wanted it to be.
And what was the turnaround time, like, long, right?
So, the turnaround time, actually, we had one patient that, because they didn't meet the criteria, it was, we went five, six, seven days, didn't hear when we called. They said, oh, so you're going to have to do that again. So, we had to actually retest the person at that point, which was, you know, unfortunate, because that's not a pleasant test if anyone has had nasal pharyngeal swab, which is what we have available still at this point. It's not pleasant. It's, you know, it's important, but it's not pleasant. So, so then, in June, the governor said, well, we need to get more testing available. So, they put out a request for, for, a request for application, an RFA, it was called. And they wanted to increase testing capability throughout the site. So, on the RFA, the only town in Washington County that was listed as a possible location or anticipated location, I think, was the correct terminology, or location under consideration, was Mati's. And so, we have an office in East Mati's, but we certainly don't have the capacity in that office to be a swab and send site, which is how they were going to increase testing capacity, so that anybody essentially who wanted to test, could get a test. But all of the health centers in Washington County looked at that, and we didn't even meet the criteria, because we're not open seven days a week. We weren't open until 8:30 at least two nights a week. We weren't open on Saturday and Sunday. So, we didn't even meet, come close to meeting the criteria till 5:00 for, as a testing site, so that we could do additional testing. So, we did receive about $145,000 from the federal government to do testing, and we have spent that to buy testing PPE, personal protective equipment, that we can't get through the Washington County Emergency Management System. We were in better shape than a lot of health centers because of the...
Do you have to buy the tests as well?
No, the tests have been supplied either through Northern Lights for their tests, the ones that they will do, or the Washington County Emergency Management Agency supplied the 200 tests that we got, subject to the initial 25.
How many have you used?
So, to date, as of last Friday, and I'm not sure about today or tomorrow, and I should object, but as of last Friday, we had only tested 34 people. The highest thing that we had was six in one day. I'm sorry.
There's plenty of tests, love.
Oh, yeah.
In case you did.
So, we have the tests, but what, so, so, we have plenty of state tests. So, here, here again, so now, we're here. So, a couple of weeks ago, we had some calls from people wanting to get tested, because they were going to have surgery or they were going to have procedures. And we, at that point, were telling them, you need to go to Calis to get the test. And we understand it's really hard for people to get some kind of Calis. I mean, I drink a little bit of Calis, frankly, some day. But, but why, there are a couple of reasons for that. One is, we, we have three challenges at the medical center. We're still having challenges over the long term. In the short term, we're great on PPE, personal protective equipment, the masks and whatever. But whenever we went, gloves, we're having a difficult time with. Gowns, we're still having trouble ordering. But, and some of the equipment that we're getting, every time we order something, it's costing more and more, and the quality is not always good. So, we're having those challenges. We're having staffing challenges, challenges with staff that have family concerns and aren't able to work or whatnot. Or just finding people who will work, finding enough medical assistance to support any additional testing. We then, we were resorting to doing screening at the door by a non-professional or somebody with some education in medicine, because we can't get people that we wanted to have, that have either a nursing, nursing assistant degree or medical assistant. So, we're allowing them to change the requirements to anybody who wants to get involved and do something that knows how to do a temperature and can ask for any questions, because we really are having difficulty in some areas with staffing. Some of the staff that were, that needed to be out are now back, but we're concerned for the winter months when flu gets added to it and whatnot.
So, what, if you had anybody exposed, or they have to hold out to stay out for two weeks, is that what you want?
So, the requirements are different for central workers than they are for other people. So, again, it depends on the degree of exposure, when they were exposed. But essentially, I think the guidelines are still about two weeks. Fortunately, we haven't had that occurrence, and we're trying to work very hard to prevent that. But currently, with the testing capabilities, so the week, a couple of weeks ago, when I got looking into this and heard that, you know, Calis is too far for a lot of people, I said, okay, what can we do? So, the challenges that we had at that time were that, again, Northern Lights would only test symptomatic patients or tests that they had ordered. So, I reached out to Northern Lights, our contact at the Northern Light Lab, and I said, hey, can you do anything? And I got, that was on a Thursday, I got a letter back, an email back from her, because we played telephone tag, on Monday, August 17th. And she said, yes, we have, I met with the team, and we will accept your asymptomatic pre-surgical, pre-procedure...
So, that was where, that's what Rachel fell into.
Right.
So, that's what happened.
So, anybody that had, and I asked specifically, rather than, because I wasn't sure, I, you know, I don't get involved in the, the, the...
Daily.
Personal daily, you know, so I don't have personal or...
But there are people that...
Information about patients. So, I just knew there was a patient who needed a test. And that what the barriers were, and staff came and said, you know, this is what we told her based on what we were told by you.
Well, you brought up a good point, because I think now, with all this, it's gone on for quite a while, and I think people are, have prolonged surgeries that are preventative, preventative surgeries...
And we're trying to get them back in.
That, in fact, will need to go to the hospital. It says, well, I'm not going to do this now, I'm not going to do this now, I'm not going to do this now, but at some point, they should do it. And then, if people knew that you could, in fact, get your, because apparently, you can't go into the hospital for procedure without a COVID-19 test. Is that, is that standard?
So, I'm not sure if that's a universal thing, because, I understand, too, the rules change constantly. So, in response to, and I didn't know it was Rachel at the time, but in response to a patient asking for a test and being told, well, you know, you can't have it here, it's not so much about whether you're a patient or you're not a patient, it's about capacity to test. And what we were told, at that time, I understood that Northern Lights would not test any asymptomatic patients. So, I reached out to Northern Lights. I got an email back on Monday, the 17th, from Jennifer Long, and she said, yes, Northern Lights will accept asympto, not end the story, but, but she would accept, they would, Northern Lights would accept asymptomatic, meaning no symptoms, but need it because I'm going to have a surgery or I'm going to have a...
That has to be a reason. You can't just come in and say, I want a test.
Right.
You have to say, I want a test.
You have to have a doctor.
And the other reason was, they needed a test because someone in the family was entering a nursing home.
Yes.
That's another reason why you needed one of those tests. They might take you in a nursing home.
So, there are multiple reasons why somebody was asked to have a test, travel or return to work or, but again, at that point, Northern Lights was saying, no, we won't test. But when I did ask and say, so, anybody who can, needs a test before they go to the hospital to have a surgery, will you run that test for us? And I got an email back from her, yes, indeed. And not just within the Northern Light system, because I wasn't sure where patients were going, it may be a non-Northern Light hospital. So, and she said, yes, they would honor that, they would do the test. That was on the 17th. On the 19th, I got a letter, an email from the director of Northern Lights Lab explaining that they had just gotten notice that they are being rationed on the number of tests that they can have and the number of reagent that they need in order to run the test, based on the number of positive results that they had. So, they were being cut back, and consequently, it all downhill, except, and they said, please do not send us any more asymptomatic tests. You must send them to the state lab. So...
Good, great.
That presented a problem for us, because at that point, our only courier service to get the lab, the blood that's drawn at the Lubeck Medical Center or the East Mati's clinic to Bangor, we use Northern Lights courier, Uniship, through that lab agreement that we have. We did not have a separate agreement to ship them on to...
Where is the state lab?
In Augusta. So, when, so, initially, when this started, Northern Lights were shipping over our, if we sent one that went to the state, there was no question asked. They just took them on down to the state, and it was fine. But then, they said, no, we're not going to be your courier to the state, so you need to figure that out. So, I got on the phone...
Operation.
And I talked to Uniship, and Uniship agreed. You let us, you know, you cleared the mark for state lab only, and we'll take it on down. Will be an extra charge, which is no problem, we'll cover that. But the problem is that those tests won't even get to the state lab until 8:30 the next day, if it's Monday through Thursday. But then, if it's on Friday, it won't get to the state lab until 2:30 on Saturday. So, there's a little bit of delay. So, instead of going straight to Northern Lights and it being running right away, so you get the test back the next day, it now has to go to the state. So, the state said, yeah, bring on, anyone who wants a test, we'll do a test. But the problem is, if the state lab gets swamped, because they have an outbreak somewhere, that test that is asymptomatic, that is pre-procedure or pre-surgical, could shut on, set on the bench for an extended time. So, when I talked with person associated in doing the testing at Calis Hospital, who has an agreement with the state, they have guaranteed a 72-hour turnaround time.
I've heard that. I called up about it, and they said they're supposed to know in 72 hours.
Yes, and they've been pretty, then, that I get is, that's pretty consistent. You can pretty much depend on that. But what I heard on a call with other CEOs this afternoon, Bucksport, for instance, can send theirs to Nordex Lab, which I will investigate, we don't have that ability right now. But their Nordex tests come back within 23 hours. But any tests that are sent to the state are now taking up to seven days to get a result. So, that's the dilemma. If you're pre-procedure, how many days out before...
We haven't even got the proceeds, right? We haven't even got the proceeds. So, anybody who has anything that they think...
It is going to get worse. So, work prepared.
Where, where are these, like, you know, 25-minute tests that the Washingtons talked about? Where are these, like, easy tests?
So, there are some, uh, oral swabs and nasal only, not the nasal pharyngeal, but the ones that...
The hospital, we can't get them.
But we don't have any available. I think, I'm not sure who exactly has some. I think Northern Lights does have some, and Bucksport has some. They did say that they have. And then, but you have to, they have to be witnessed, there has to be an approved place to do that. So, we have not been, we don't have that capacity yet. We'll certainly look into it, but it's not here yet. So, anyway.
Well, I don't envy your job at all. Not at all.
Well, you know, shame on us for not keeping you more involved, shame on me, not us, for not keeping you more informed of what's going on. But, you know, certainly, anytime you have a question, I mean, the medical center wants to be a good community partner with all of the towns that we have in our service area. So, if there's a need or there's, you know, a concern, feel free to reach out anytime. We welcome the opportunity.
I was in a meeting yesterday with EMS, and they mentioned that they were recruiting EMS personnel to be testers. I didn't know if you were aware of that, and maybe you could consider that using EMS testers.
That's a heartening, partnering with them. That is an excellent suggestion, amazing suggestion, that I certainly follow up on that. So...
Go ahead, Jen.
If I'm understanding correctly, I just can't kind of follow through the whole litmus from April till now.
Would you like a copy?
Yeah, I would. But...
I hope you might.
But I think, if I'm understanding correctly, tell me if I am. You can state a policy today that may change much.
It may change, if I put out a policy this morning, it may change by noon time, or it may change by 5:00. Yet again, that's been the history of this whole thing. You know, and I'm really proud of my staff, because they've done an amazing job under very trying circumstances. And, you know, I, it's easy for those of us who are in the back office, not dealing with it all the time, to say, who's not even here yet, guys? What's, you know, shame on me for even going there, because day to day, they don't know who may be a potential exposure. And it's a very stressful environment for everybody, for the community, for staff, for everybody. So, timbers get a little short sometimes, and people sound a little pasty or short in their responses, and we don't mean to come across that way at all. You know, we try, whatever we can, we have stood up telehealth, so that patients can get the key everything they need. If there's an outbreak that hits our community, we've gotten laptops, so that the providers can take care of patients from wherever they are. If they can't come into the health center, but they can do a telehealth visit with a patient. So, we're trying our best to make sure that we're going to be responsive when things really, if things...
And you don't know, because we have that wedding thing happen, and just boom, just one little spot, and, yeah, so you have to be on your toes. I appreciate all, all you've done. I feel very insane that you're here in the medical center.
You guys are like a movie character every day.
It's a movie character. And the information, I mean, it's been so confusing for those of us who are in the medical profession, let alone for people who don't have any background in medicine. And so, it's a big challenge, for sure.
I think for taking the time to come and see us.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. And anytime, and when you do, I see, I love your website, by the way, and I saw that you have a drop-down menu for emergency preparedness. I am very involved with the emergency preparedness on statewide level, on a county level, so, and of course, for our own organization. So, anytime, you need help.
Emergency management over here, Renee.
Yeah, I keep, you are on my agenda to retweet, so, retweet me if I don't get it.
All right. Thank you, Marilyn.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Let's open some bids. We got a sand bid, right? More than one.
Let's stack it further down in September.
It's not up here, is it?
You dust off those two bids.
It's on open bid six.
That's a lot of sand.
Well, I, oh, okay, so, open the other one. I just saw bids for old business. Do tax applied property then?
Sure.
We're skipping all around today, aren't we?
There are, there's a spreadsheet, you can pack it if you want to follow along and write things down.
Okay.
Dan, she took the job.
Well, I know.
There is a letter opener.
You know I'm gonna, that's, I'm not allowed to have a letter opener. Dangerous. But I can swing it through over there. Dan?
Just for, prior to reading, what was last year's price?
We're not doing sand now. We're doing sand supply. We're doing that house, remember, we didn't accept the...
Oh, okay, okay.
We went to 60.
Oh, no, exactly.
Yes. Well, it's lots, 36006.
And how many?
14, tax, tax, not 14, lot 3600.
And how many, uh...
Well, we seem to have... Return envelope, if needed. Okay, so we have one, two, three, I think, yeah. Three.
What's that, the 230?
Huh? I was wondering if she... She gave me the...
One of them.
Oh, she gave me one.
She gave him one to open. Now, just look the opening that one, we'll read next. Okay, the first bid that we opened for this is for... From David Allen Pudlow and Lori Pudlow, for $71,013.
Makes sense?
No sense. There you go. Dan, you're on. I'll open this one.
So, I'm, I'm going now?
Yes.
You're on as well.
I'm going like, Siskumbah. No. The backboard, we were offering $50,000, three hundred bits for 13 of the back row. That was from Justin and Sonia Barker.
And so, this one is from Daniel Goldstein, and the bid is for $65,000 even. So, someone, I may emotionally accept the bid of $71,013 from the Pudlow family.
I will second that.
They're from Connecticut.
Of course they are. All great people are from Connecticut.
Okay, so, one of the bids, want to just do the sand bid if you can? Is there any way to vote?
Yeah, we're gonna vote on it. I second it. Now, we're gonna...
Oh, all in favor? Sorry. This is stuff we don't need. Let's just do this other bid, we can... We've got all the... So, we have a sand bid from H&amp;S Trucking and Construction for 1040 per cubic yard, for 2,500 cubic yards of sand, this winter road maintenance, between three eighths and less, as described in the advertising bid. Town, a responsible, town is responsible for mixing and piling sand. We understand work is to be completed by September 30th, and here's the insurance. I make the, is that, I say, what did you pay last year? That sounds like a good price, actually.
You might want to say...
I think we're sorry, because I think it had dropped last year. And we were up in the 11s, I think.
And speaking of...
I know, it's 10...
Yeah, it's 10 something.
$10.40 per cubic yard.
Speaking of Licky, he's, he is very happy with quality and quality.
Yeah, I keep, we don't know what it was last year. Yeah, the next time...
It was right around.
Yeah, it was, it was the year before, we're happy about it. We were happy about it.
For your own information.
So, if you'd like to continue what you were about to say?
Ah, yes, I'll make the motion to accept the bid. Well, sometimes you can put it back out the bid, but I don't know what you paid last year, so...
It's about the same.
About the same. For H&amp;S Construction. Make the motion to accept the sand bid from...
Second.
So, what's the bid?
1040 per cubic yard. All in favor? All right, let's see if we get back over now. Fire truck loan update. So, I, um, Suzette and Renee came to me and we, Renee signed you initial letter of requesting that they wanted, we wanted to investigate having the bond bank do our loan for the, for the fire truck. But then there, we, because it's the bond bank, it had to go to our lawyer and there had to be some kind of a legal oversight of us applying. It wasn't just, you can call up. It's not like a regular commercial bank. So, that was, um, Jensen and Barb, right? And they sent all these steps we had to go through, one of which was allowing Renee and Suzette to sign the necessary documents. But there was a little bit of concern because we're not going to know the exact rate until October fifth. And we can't back out of the deal until after September twenty-third. So, I, I thought, I, I called them up and said, okay, I don't think we're going to sign something that we don't know the interest rate for.
No.
So, they're going to give us their best, their best, uh, guess, I guess, of, on what it will be before we, before the date we can't withdraw any further. And apparently, they have to get a pool of people, the bond bank. And they have to all go into this pool and say, okay, we want bonds. And those, those group of people looking for bond backing, they go and they buy, they find the money at a certain interest rate. And the collection of the people, us being one, causes them to get better rates. So, we can wait until the, um, estimated interest rate is given us. But then at that point, we would have to agree. So, we're gonna wait, we'll wait for that. But I do want to make the motion to let them sign.
Oh, definitely.
Sign it. So, it's, it was, it was confusing, but I tried to be pleasant because I was like, you know, this is, I treat the town as if it's my money and I don't, I'm not signing anything. I don't know what the rates are, kind of thing. And-
I have all the trust in the world in Suzette and Renee, so.
So, I make the motion that we allow Suzette and Renee to, uh, sign these documents for the main bond bank loan. They will be, they will be letting us know at the next meeting what the estimated rate is. And, and we have comparative rates that we did, we did reach out to Bar Harbor and the other banks in the area to find out what their rates would be at the time. All in favor? And they've done a lot of work on it. So, Renee wrote a fantastic letter, which I thought was just wonderful. Did you all got, all see it? You all signed it? I, no, it's the governor's letter. Do we have another letter?
We got two, right. No problems.
Oh, they're all, okay. So, she went through all the different, uh, entities that are nonprofit that have taken, um, land off, lowered their tax, their taxes on it for various reasons, requesting that they might want to donate some money towards purchase of the fire truck. Because after all, just because you have land doesn't mean you're not going to have a fire. So, I think I will read this letter. As the town of Lubec changes, it is clear people are recreating. Oh, recreating. Recreating. Is that? Looks like recreating, but recreating and moving to more remote areas of Lubec. These areas are not located near fire hydrants. Potential emergencies in these areas of Lubec caused a need for increased water supply. It takes thousands of gallons of water to contain. Structure fires, wood fires, and wildland fires. It takes longer to extinguish a fire when water supplies are so far away. In May two thousand fifteen, over two hundred acres burned off Boot Cove Road near Hamilton Cove. The main forestry service and a helicopter were needed to help suppress the flames. This has been an extremely dry season for Washington County. A drought is affecting most of the state of Maine. The town of Lubec recently voted to purchase a new fire truck, which will cost the taxpayers over three hundred thousand. Was it not two ninety? Oh, over three hundred thousand, that's including interest. This apparatus will have a three thousand gallon water capacity and can pump a thousand gallons per minute. Would your organization consider a donation toward the cost of this new fire truck? So, I think it's just great. Every letter has to be signed individually, hopefully with blue pen, so that it looks like an original. We don't need a photo, you know, they're all dressed separately, different people. And we're gonna start doing this. I'm starting down there, Jason.
Carol.
Make, oh yeah, make the motion to sign the letter. I, I'm, all in favor? Sorry, I was getting ahead of myself. Here, can you give that to Jason?
I must correct that, but it wasn't.
Carol, this goes to all of those that are on tax abatement status. Is that correct?
Well, it's gonna go to Combs Good Shores.
Not, not tax abatement.
Robert Shady, all, everyone in conservation land.
Conservation, open space.
Down East Coastal and Service.
Not Tegro.
Not Tegro, we didn't do that.
Those people, you know, what, what, how would you?
They're on the open space list.
Uh, anybody who has gotten a tax deferment on open space, so whoever that was. There are, I don't know if it's public knowledge.
Yeah, it is.
Well, there it is, public knowledge. The yellow?
Everything, yep. And then I found some that had transferred. This is a list that Jim created. And anybody that, um-
He doesn't even, he doesn't even single anybody out. But there were how many? Thirteen?
Thirteen. There were two that I found in the new one.
I guess they'll hold.
I was looking at you, it's on.
Oh, they're, they're looking around after the name. So, how many did you say there were? Eleven, thirteen? There were eleven on the list, but two transferred since that last business created. What does that mean?
Meaning they sold it to somebody else. So, two additional names.
I thought Fiona was going to be here tonight. She said she would have to have somebody else come with her. But if you said maybe she's not doing well yet, big surgery.
But Jason? I mean, you already signed a top one, but Jason hasn't.
Uh-oh. Well- We're dancing now.
Somehow, somehow it's bad.
He doesn't know which direction.
This was not very effective.
He doesn't know which direction. Several letters.
I think that was one here.
And if that's not bad enough, we have about fifty appointment papers to sign after this.
Okay, I think we're good this way, but then Carol's missing a couple on those.
Okay. Well, while we're signing everything, I should just start with the appointments. I'm gonna start reading the appointments. Well, I better finish them. My signature used to, used to be red, eligible, but it's not anymore. They're all signed?
Yep.
All righty, so, we're going down to appointment papers.
Thought we did the last one.
We like, Jason, what do you have? Appointment papers? Well, we did the, um, essential workers that come to work every day, but these are the committees. We could have did them all in one. Evolving loans, Peter Boyce, Cecil Morris, Michael Scavani, Dan Wagner. I'm making a motion that we appoint all these people. Shelf fish committee, Amanda Lyons, Sonia Bailey, Joseph Keane, Josh Lyons, Tracy Sawtown.
Oh, okay.
Recycling, Rachel Rubier, Mike Scavani, David Aldridge, Kenny Morris, Gary Rhodes, Deborah, TV. I think, um, so, if some, if some of this changes and nobody comes in after ten days and they for some reason don't want it, we, we're trying for the people that were in it last time. Harbor board, Peter Boyce, uh, Dan, Jason said that was fine if he wanted to do it. He's super busy. And you've got some affiliation with fishermen. Dan Wagner, Ricky Wright, Derek Lyons, Sean Kerikoff. I know they don't want me on the board. So, economic development committee, Nancy Harrison, Renee Gray, Denise Rule, Rhonda Welcome, Jason Abesius. You're on that, economic development?
No, that's not right.
Yeah, no.
Nancy Harrison, Renee Gray, Denise Rule, Rhonda Welcome, not Jason, not Peter, and not Sean.
What, what I thought?
Rachel, but we are, do we already do her?
No, I'll put her on there. Rachel Rubier, well, she's not here anyway. Nancy Harrison, Renee Gray, Denise Rule, Rhonda Welcome, Rachel Rubier, FOAA Officer.
She's gonna make some collateral.
What is FOAA?
Uh, Freedom of Access. Ass.
Is that Francis? So, that's it?
Yep.
I make emotionally appoint all these people.
I'm gonna get.
Second.
All in favor? What are you going to get?
I'm gonna make favors for Rachel.
More ink.
Okay. You want me to just do, there's only three of us. We can just pass it down and then-
Yeah.
Or Dan won't be in the middle. Marking in the middle is interesting.
Just fold it, do the corners and, here, man.
Well, I appreciate everybody being here tonight because we have two people out. One is recovering from surgery and the other one is also recovering from surgery. So, we wish them all well. I'm hoping that-
Is that your sneaker talking now?
Yeah.
Rachel will feel well soon when we're giving her our best thoughts. And like Jason said, she's missing her sidekick.
Yes, it would, it would behoove her to get well.
Yes, that would be good. She can be outspoken. I saw that she did get her yard signs out before she left.
Should we do other business while we're signing?
No, not really.
You can't walk in two gum at the same time?
No. I can't ask before I finish signing.
Just trying to stick up for Rachel there.
Her name?
Rachel? This isn't recycling. Washington County. Oh, yeah.
What? I don't remember. I think it was on the list.
No, it's a little bit of a, somebody just transposed, it was on the harbor board, pushed it down, something. I don't know if the devil saved her, what's the matter?
She's on the recycling bin.
Oh, yeah. What? Please. Who's this? Did we know you pointed to Mary and Tracy last night?
Yes.
Oh, we know there's a west.
I might have done Rachel, but she-
Oh, it doesn't- Other business. Dedimus Justice.
Dedus.
Dedimus Justice?
This is-
Very cool.
Our penny has become a Dedimus Justice. And so, we're announcing that. It's quite an achievement. It's a level above the notary public position. It's a lifetime, um, appointment. And it's-
What is it called?
Dedimus.
Dedimus Justice.
D E D I M U S.
Yep.
Justice. Lifetime appointment. There's only a hundred in the state of Maine.
Yep.
And they, she just becomes a lifetime notary.
Isn't she awesome?
I say she is. I, I forgot to congratulate her today, but I did bring her some Down East duck sauce. I just said that as a reward. Um, we're gonna have a special town meeting before our next meeting, September sixteenth. There was a error. It was pretty much a clerical error in one of the warrants. The, the total of setting aside, do we have one?
Retiring debt. Your warrant.
Oh, oh, here, here. Yes, the article, I don't know what number it was on there, but it, it stated that the tan interest, the Santa Sol Ched bomb, the public horse garage, and the plow and dump truck, all of those were not totaled up. Just one of the figures was up at the top to raise and appropriate. And MMA said that we had to redo it. So, the article reads now, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of forty thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-five cents for debt retirement outlined below. So, we are having, uh, and the biggest problem with this is we need twenty-five people here. So-
And it's probably not the best idea to have it in this home. It'd probably be fire ban.
It's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be in the fire ban.
Yeah.
And it should last ten minutes, I mean. But the problem is getting twenty-five over here.
Stand it flat on a corner, flag down cars as they go by.
Okay, then.
And what's the date of that going to be?
It's, it's our next meeting day. It's five thirty, just before our next board meeting, September eighteenth. Uh, December sixteen, sorry. September sixteen. Is that two weeks?
Motion to-
Yeah, motion to sign the warrant. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, I missed any motions to sign the appointment papers, if there was one.
I made the motion to sign the, uh, all those appointments when I made the list.
Yeah?
Okay. So, we've come to committee updates.
Revolving loan has no particular update. Just so as a member, please commit to the office. We have the funds if you would like to allocate the funds for-
I know that the-
Assistance to business.
The shelf fish committee is the second, is gonna be the second Monday of this month because that first Monday is Labor Day. And so, Amanda told me it would be the second Monday. Um, the harbor board is usually the third Monday at six, but you'll get a call because sometime-
I'll get a call.
Some, but it's always at six. It's not like all these different times. If it's, you can't come long.
I'm good for six.
Okay. Uh, Safe Harbor is anxiously awaiting the probing test for the, for, uh, being done by Proctor in conjunction with Haley and Aldridge. They have just notified me that it will not start now till, oh, the Monday after Labor Day. It's gonna be the Tuesday after Labor Day, but they are backed up a week. And so, we're hoping to see them there in a week. And-
Yeah.
Apparently, we are trying to, um, work out some of the details between the entrance and the egress going on over there. And so, there have been some questions from the Marat team in Washington to the town. And one of them was, is it going to alter the need for permits that Ms. Gilson has completed? And after reading it three times, I realized the word completed was really great. No one's told us this has been completed, but let's hope that's true, which means they are back working on the contract.
Right.
Once we get the contract and we did the, um, different performance measurements, we submitted those a month ago. Once that is signed, we will get what's called a notice to proceed. I'm very excited for that. I hold my breath though. What?
And it goes out to bid.
Yeah, then it goes out to design build.
Yeah, that's the best way to do a project.
Yes.
But, uh-
And we have two interested people that are doing, doing design build, people that are both interested in bidding, that do do design build. So, that's always good.
I might know one.
I bet you knows both of them.
I might have worked for one.
Yeah. So, anyway, um, that was Safe Harbor. I don't know about recycling or any of the other committees.
I just have a couple announcements to make.
I was just going to, just always remember, cool people recycle.
Yes, because recycling is.
It ain't.
We know.
I did say it.
Kenny and I, I know we meet the usual crowds on Saturday. We have a lot of fun down there. This is going to be a popular day. Hopefully, we can make money out of it. Even if we didn't, it's the right thing to do. Are we in public comment or you were going to say?
Um, I was just going to announce, um, do you remember the pub, the Project Canopy grant for the trees that we're going to plant? Um, that had a deadline and, uh, Mr. David Stockford on our behalf asked for an extension and it was granted. The new deadline is June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one because of COVID, so I just updated.
Actually, that, that you mentioned that we had a grant for a kiosk to be built at Safe Harbor and I also requested an extension till June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We got it.
And I would like to mention that the boys from the town have done a phenomenal job, experiencing, they were there, getting rid of the cells.
Oh, my golly, isn't that wonderful?
They worked.
Yes, they, I, I know they kept digging and they get bigger. The roots, the roots were like halfway across the whole lot. I felt bad. I said, every time I drove by, there was a bigger root show.
They did a great job.
Don't say anything, Carol.
Now we can go plant more.
Well, on that note, we could thank, um, Robert Baker for his many years of employment there and that was, that did send off.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Did a phenomenal job.
He did.
For a long time.
Of course, they all have.
Forget it's any talk soon, Willie.
He was the excavator operator.
Yes.
And we should announce that we'll be closed, um, Monday for Labor Day. The town office is closed. And of course, Friday for the, um, first responder day.
And I just wanted to add, uh, Jamie and I have recently tried to make an effort to get to, we haven't gotten to all of them yet because there are so many of all of the new parks, Cops Good Shore parks.
Yes.
And I would highly recommend going out and walking these. They are, of the ones I've visited so far, and I won't say which because I don't want to give you any favorites, are absolutely spectacular. They are very walker friendly, very pet friendly. They have pet stations. They have, um. These little cabanas that are screened in with tables and chairs and rooms. Um, I know one of the parks has water stations available. They're just phenomenal.
They, they have.
Unbelievable.
Drawn every eye and crossed every.
Yeah, they're.
So if you don't know which one you want to try, the best thing to do is to go to Red Point Park. It's their main park and they have an informational map there to show you where all the different areas are.
They are all very busy.
And I think for, for a point of nice advertising, I believe I have read that Lubec now has more walking trails than Bar Harbor. I might be incorrect, but I think I read that. So it is, and they're just, I mean, I can't, I can't say enough of how beautiful they are. They really, they really are.
We're getting calls on our in the town office too. People really saying.
Yeah, there was an article about Cops Good Shores just in the, in the Portland.
Oh, that's the, yeah, that's the, uh, Red Point Park, low tide, going out to an island and he has slate stepping stones. It's fantastic.
I, I did that walk. It's unbelievable. You go out, you get to an island and the views are just magnificent.
It's stunning. It's going to be stunning for people to visit and I personally, again, would like to say thanks. I think, I know they're not even done yet, but they're gorgeous. They're very focused on what they're doing. Yeah, they, they have a vision and they very much.
And I think that it, it goes along with the vision that we have for years now that I've been so many meetings when I was the chamber president, that our vision was to, um, work with all of the assets, what assets that Lubec has and its natural beauty. And of course, efficiently for years have, have loved its natural beauty and, and had their livelihood off it. So there's a few, um, things to iron out between access to the clambers and some of these areas. But I agree with you, Dan. It's beautiful. The walking trails are gorgeous.
That being said.
But that being said, we're going into, I make a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I have to read that. The pursuant to one M R S A four oh five six eight personnel matters and four oh five six C real estate acquisition.
I checked that one. I'll second both of them. There you go.
All in favor?
All right, Mr. Rule, get out.
Aw, be nice.